So they don't know if I'm actually here or if like.
Good evening.
Mr. Clark, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Look like a friendly neighbor.
Can you see me in here?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Kevin, your bandwidth is really low. You might want to find a better hotspot area.
Okay, I'll look.
Ready, Ranger? Good evening, everyone. Welcome all of you to August 10th, Monday's Town Council meeting. Tonight's invocation will be led by Mayor Fortun Finch. Please join me in standing for invocation.
That's great. Father, we thank you for another wonderful day. We thank you for our town. We thank you for the opportunity to serve. We pray for tonight that you give us wisdom. We consider the items of the agenda. You would help us be good stewards of what you have given us as a town. And that we would make wise decisions for all of our citizens. And thank you for all the public servants that are here tonight. Father, we just lift them up to you as they do their jobs on a daily basis and pray for safety for them. Thank you so much for the opportunity to live in such a wonderful place. In your name, amen.
Amen. Please join me standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Please be seated. Now time is seven oh one. Let me call to order the regular town council meeting for Monday, August 10. For the record, all council members except Mr. Freeman are present. Mr. Clark has joined us via Zoom. And most of the council members are here in person. I thank everybody who has joined us in person or via Zoom in this meeting. The first item on the agenda is introduction of new employees and could invite Ms. Guthrie to introduce the new employees.
Mayor, I would like to ask our police chief if he would introduce his two first employees. Then I'll take a look next.
Officer Franklin and Sergeant Vegas. First, I want to introduce Officer Darnell Franklin. He comes to SPD from the Roy City Police Department. Officer Franklin has over 11 years of experience, including as a field training officer, community outreach liaison officer. Officer Franklin was assigned to the U.S. Marshals Task Force while serving as a deputy in Red River County. Officer Franklin is a retired sergeant in the United States Marine Corps. Next, we have Sergeant Bill Vegas, who comes to us from the Murphy Police Department and has 28 years of police experience, including 14 years as a patrol sergeant. Sergeant Vegas holds a Master Peace Officer license and has spent hundreds of hours of management and leadership training, including but not limited to the Bill Blackwood Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas and the FBI Command College. Please help me welcome Sergeant Bill Vegas and Officer Darnell Franklin to Sunnyvale Police Department.
Okay, um, hold on, hold tight, guys. Don't run off. I want to go ahead and introduce the next three employees that are new to our organization. Then we'll take a big group photo together, so don't let them run off. Um, first, if I could ask Latasha Miller to come forward. Latasha is the new Human Resources Coordinator for the town of Sunnyvale. Um, we really went over kind of a threshold when we set up the police department. And so Latasha is a welcome addition, is going to take a lot of duties over from Finance Department. Latasha has 28 years of human resources experience and retired from Tech Dot. And we were very lucky that she lives close by and wanted to join the organization. So welcome, Latasha. And next, if I could have Zach Mans come forward. So Zach, if you all remember Eric, Zach is the new Eric. Zach is coming to us from the city of Irving. He has his master's in public administration. And he's done a lot of really interesting work with open data portals and performance measurements and strategic planning. So he's going to bring a lot of depth to the organization in addition to learning the planning functions. So welcome to Zach. And then last, but certainly not least, though, we're very thankful to have Mark Priest there here. Mark is acting as interim Development Services Director. So Mark has hit the ground running. It's just such a wonderful thing to not have just a vacancy and no balls are dropping. He has extensive planning experience. He owns a firm called Planning Concepts. And he's worked on both the public and private side. So he kind of knows how to speak both languages. And I texted three very close friends of mine that are in the planning world. When Rashad gave me his notice and I said, oh, please tell me some great people that that could step in in an interim role. And all three of them responded with his name. So very good. So we're very thankful to have him on board for the for the time being. Thanks.
And once again, welcome all the new employees. So glad you are here. So glad you chose to be a part of this town. This is a really good town, and I hope your experience here is phenomenal. Okay, next item is announcement. This is the time. Pursue the Texas Government Code Section 551 dot all four one five. Council, our staff may make announcements. Counsel, I can offer you first.
Mayor, counsel, thank you. I would like to bring to the attention of our council, our town staff, and Attorney General, that it appears that we have some discrepancies in the ordinances, or rather, the HOA deeds with restriction to signs and flags that may be flown inside of our communities. I would like to have this. I'm sorry, I thought we were.
I'll put it forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd like to just do a shout out to our school superintendent, school board, staff, people who have been working, I'm sure, all hours trying to figure out how to move forward and educate our kids. And I think it's worth for those who are here, but also those who may be watching via Facebook Live, to please realize and recognize that these people are doing everything they can to make our kids safe, to educate our kids, and to make themselves safe. And I just think it deserves mentioning that their efforts don't go unnoticed because they do happen to be a grandfather of a little girl who's entering the first grade this year. And I'm not seeing all the nuts, bolts, and screws that go into what our school people are doing. But I can just imagine the magnitude of charging, like, it's almost like Columbus. And if you want to say Columbus was the first person to come to the New World, whoever the new people were coming over from Europe, uh, the first ones to do it, that's basically what they're doing. And I just plead with people to remember that if something goes south, it wasn't intentional. It was just something that, you know, you can't juggle all the balls and keep them all in the air at one time. Just, we need to, you know, pull ourselves up our bootstraps and figure out what the better alternative is to get past that particular point. I just want to make that very clear.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Anyone else?
Mayor, I will add to what Mark said, and that is that our superintendent and our staff at our schools are doing an outstanding job of preparing our kiddos in the school year. There's a missing moving target that they can't hit, but it just heads off to Doug Williams and the rest of our staff that's doing an incredible job in our town.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Staff, any announcements? There are none. I want, for the record, I want to state that six, actually, seven or eight, Mr. Councilmember Freeman joined the meeting via Zoom. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Next item is public forum. This is the town. Pleasants may come forward and address council on items which are not on the agenda or legal or personal matters. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, please do so. Or if anyone calling in via Zoom, like to raise their hand, you may do so as well.
Mayor George.
What? Say it again.
Seven ten, we no longer have Councilmember Clark.
Okay, he has some issues with their network. Seven ten, Councilmember Clark is no more in the meeting. Thank you. Okay, now one from the members of the audience is coming forward. Joseph, or anyone raising their hand? Okay, no hands raised, so I'm going to cross the public forum. Moving on to the next item, that's the consent agenda items. Council, there are two items, item number two and three on the consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Now being recommended, so I'm going to make, I'm going to ask for a motion with respect to consent agenda items two and three.
Motion approved as presented.
Motion made by Finch, second by Egan to approve consent agenda items two and three as presented. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor, signify. All opposed? Motion passed. Six, oh, Mr. Clark is absent. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, item number four. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. Thank you very much for the reminder. Counsel, with your permission, I'd like to move up two items. Item number 10 and 12. Item number 10, council has, I'm sorry, staff has recommended item to be table till October, August 24. Ms. Guthrie, is that right?
Yes, sir. Um, we are working with two different consulting groups. Um, one is the Response Time Consultant, and one is the Architect and Engineering Consultants. And both have said that their reports will be ready in time for the next agenda, which would be the August 24th agenda. So we asked that you table this item for tonight. And I did do a notice in our, in our community newsletter and on Facebook and Twitter to notify people so that they would know that it's not till next meeting.
Okay, so the council, the recommendation here is to table discussion and action regarding the fire station location to August 24th. Again, we are doing this so that in case anyone has joined us to talk about this or participate in this discussion, you're welcome to stay back and attend the rest of the council, but if you're here just for this, you may drop off. With that, counsel, I'm going to ask for a motion to table the item number 10. Thank you. That's right. Motion made by Ms. Regan to table item number 10 until August 24th. Is that a second? Second by Mr. Allen. Everyone heard the motion? Are there any discussions? There are none. All in favor, signify. All opposed? How about you, Mr. Freeman? I thought I saw Mr. Freeman raising his hand. Okay, all opposed? Motion passed six of. I also want to pull forward item number 12. That's the mayor and council request for future staff updates and agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor. Now for the mayor, the council, our staff, and our city attorney. It's been brought to my attention that we have some restrictions within our towns with this of our HOAs prohibit the use or the display of certain signs that are potentially discriminatory against certain organizations or religious affiliations, as well as flags. I would like for us to put this on the agenda for an upcoming item to discuss that, to ensure that we are not discriminating against religious or the ability to fly flags without some reasonable some reasonable rules and regulations that allow us to do so. And also like the town manager and the attorney to present to us the options that we can use, and that we'll be able to vote and move on something quickly. It's also been brought to my attention that we have some members in our towns that are currently being fined for the display of religious signs. And I'd like for us to address that as appropriately as well.
Is that 24th, is reasonable date? Susan and Brenda? Okay, anything else? Okay, if there are none, I'm going to cross that item. I'm going to move back to public hearing. That's item number four. Call a public hearing, discuss, consider and act upon a request by the town or city will to approve the first reading of ordinance 20 dash 16 and ordinance amending the town Unified Development Ordinance, ordinance 17 dash 09 duly passed by the town council on March 26, 2018, as amended from time to time. So asked to amend section 3.04 zoning land use regulations, specifically section 3.04 dot or seven accessory building and uses as well as any other associated sections.
Mayor, our chief building official, Doug Key, is going to take this item.
Mr. Key, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor and council, staff has received multiple resident inquiries on the reasoning for the differences specifically for detached garages and accessory buildings. In order to address this, town staff has proposed an amendment to assist the administration of accessory building regulations, specifically in regards to max height requirements. The Unified Development Ordinance currently notes different max height criteria for accessory buildings, accessory dwellings, and detached garages. Of course, consistency, staff recommends the max height criteria be the same for all of accessory structures. We did present this to P and Z, and P and Z did approve this seven to zero. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Key. And this is a public hearing. I'm going to take public comments at this time. So if anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council on item number four, please come forward. Or if you're calling me as Zoom, please raise your hand. Nobody's coming forward from the members of the audience.
No hands are raised.
Okay, no hands are raised in the Zoom, so I'm going to cross the public comments. Counsel, are there any discussions or questions on item number four?
Mayor, if I may.
See you again.
Expand on this a little bit. I mean, I've read through it, but can you give an example of where this, how, where and how this comes into play?
Yes, I can. I think in one of your exhibits that you have there, it shows the wall height requirements for certain structures in certain areas as far as square footage goes. So give you the example, if you'll look down like line item number four, where it starts, where it starts with two acres. And if you'll look across there, it allows them to have a max wall height of 15 feet. And so what that allows them to do is to have that height, but then once they create that wall, they're going to have the type of roof that they're
Type of roof that they're going to put on there, like a gable roof or whatever is going to raise that height requirement. In the U D O, there is a specific line item that specifically states that detached garages can only be allowed to have a max height of fourteen. So that's kind of the discrepancy there because you're going to have some properties that are allowed to have fifteen foot wall heights. And they're wanting to do a detached garage, they can only have fourteen foot maximum height detached garage.
So first of all, if I can break in here for a second, it basically means that they're minus one foot for putting a quicker roof on. And secondly, the roof would have to be flat.
Correct.
So what this does allows them to put a gable roof on and the roof tends, the, the peak of the roof tends to follow the. The peak of the roof of the existing stru- uh, primary structure.
That is correct. And there is a max height in that zone, in those zoning districts for residential up forty.
Yeah, that's, that was another point I was going to make. Thank, thank you for bringing that up because this just makes the accessory dwelling. Match. How the house is built, how the primary living space is built. It's basically all it does.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Key, is it possible for them to have a two story?
No. No, they would still, in order to have a two story, you would have to have a larger in maximum height on your walls. And so we're not presenting a change in the maximum height of the walls. And so therefore they wouldn't be able to have a two story. If they wanted to have a two story, they would have to come back and either request a variance or an S U D.
So help me understand. It says, in addition, the wall height shall be measured, or it's wall height shall be measured, okay? So the F says the overall height. Shall not exceed the maximum height.
Right. The maximum height of the zoning district.
So the wall height is what, still limited by the?
The wall height is still limited by the size of the lots.
If it's a two story building. What's the wall height? Is that still the height of the first story or is it?
Well, they wouldn't be able to do a two story building. There again, they would have to go through the S U D process to do that. For like an example I was using earlier. If you have a, a one acre tract and you want to build an accessory building or you want to build a detached garage. According to this table, the max wall height can be ten feet. Well, then you're going to put that gable roof on there. Typically, a gable roof would be a four twelve, five twelve type pitch. And so that's going to take it up another two or three feet, maximum maybe four feet. And so you're still going to be approaching that fourteen foot threshold. Uh, which at the U D O right now states, you cannot go past the fourteen foot threshold. This allows them to put a common style roof on the building to make it look customary to the, to the primary structure.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Key. I would like to have additional questions or discussions.
Just one question, Doug. Did we run into a problem somewhere with this was an issue for some particular property or some particular area of the town?
Yes, I had, I've had two submittals um, that are actually on hold right now. Uh, because of, because of their submittals, they were classifying the buildings as detached garages. And because of the U D O stating that the max height was fourteen foot, we couldn't approve the permit at this time. Uh, until we made this amendment and made this change.
Are there additional discussions? Mr. Freeman, do you have any comments, sir? Okay, got it.
Mayor. Uh, can you note that Kevin came back on at seven eighteen, so he'll be voting on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I'll join at seven eighteen.
And Mayor, I will comment. Uh, this is more of a situation where we have two conflicting, we have two rules that conflict with each other. And what we're doing is. Cleaning up. The, the one bad one to make it look more like what we did with the U D O. Uh, particularly relating to the primary uh, living quarter on the, on the property.
I, I understood the consistency part. I got it, right? No doubt, but I, I was not sure about the height. The allowed height, maximum height, that's really the only thing. That's, that's why I, I want to make sure that. We are not creating a different problem. Consistency part, I got.
Well, there again, like I was telling you, Mayor, because we did not uh, interject on the maximum wall height. The overall height is not going to really be affected much.
Okay. Okay. If there are no other comments um, or discussions, uh, can I have a motion with respect to item number four?
So move to approve item number four as presented.
Motion made by Egan to approve item number four as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Eldridge. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If not, all in favor signify. Motion passed seven of. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Key. Moving on to item number five. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider and act upon a request. By the town of Sunnyvale to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty dash seventeen. An ordinance amended the town unified development ordinance. Ordinance seventeen dash zero nine. Duly passed by the town council on March twenty sixth, twenty eighteen. As amended from time to time, so as to amend section three point oh four dot oh six. Nonconformities, specifically section three point oh four dot oh six dot F. Nonconforming laws as well as any other associated sections.
Mayor, um, town engineer Lyle Jenkins is going to take this side.
Good here, Mr. Jenkins.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Um, basically what this amendment is all about is as the town has developed over the years. Parcels have been subdivided in such a way that we, we've essentially created a, a, a significant number of. Kind of oddball parcels, for lack of a better term, that. Do not and, and probably will not ever be able to meet our standard lot width setback requirements and as such as stated out in the U D O. And as a matter of fact, many of these lots wouldn't even have conformed to previous developments. Um, legally, because these lots are existing, they do have a right to be developed because they're of an adequate size to allow a home to be developed. But because they don't meet the width and setback requirements, they have hardships. Which requires them to go through the process through the B O A, so on and so forth. The intent of this amendment is to essentially streamline this process and to allow for, for exceptions for these pre-existing. Nonconforming laws in order to be more efficient, more responsive to residents and developers and to reduce the workload on the town. Um, Rashad had put this package together and had provided a number of examples to illustrate for y'all kind of what we're looking at. That having been said, uh, I'd be more than happy to take any questions from y'all at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. I'm going to open up for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council on item number five. You may please come forward. Or if you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to uh, look to the Zoom, the.
No hands raised.
No hands are raised via Zoom, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any questions or discussions on item number five? There are none, so I'm going to call for a motion with respect to item number five. Motion approved as presented. Motion made by Mr. Finch, second by Mr. Freeman. Okay. Item number five as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If there are none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven of. Council four and five are both first reading, so they'll be back on the agenda on twenty fourth. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Moving on to item number six. Discuss, consider and act upon a request by Billy Duckworth to approve. The boffex edition, a minor plat, I told about three thirty, Town East Boulevard.
And this is going to be taken by Mark Priest.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Again, to Sunnyvale.
This is a minor plat. Uh, it's on Town East Boulevard. It's undeveloped, unplatted property. It's a single lot subdivision. Um, the council has approved the site plan uh, earlier this year. The plat is consistent with that site plan. Uh, planning and zoning commissioned by six one vote recommends your.
Do you know why that one was opposed to it?
I do not. Thank you.
So I'm going to open up for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council. Uh, please come forward. If you're calling via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward. Uh, Ricky, anybody raising their hand?
No hands raised.
Thank you, ma'am. No hands raised via Zoom, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any discussions or questions on item number six? Okay. If there are none, I'm going to call for a motion. On item number six.
Motion approved item six as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve item number six as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Freeman. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven of. Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, consider and approve a professional service agreement with. Azovar Government Solutions for sales tax auditing and recovery services. Authorize the town manager to execute their agreement. Mr. Bar, good evening, sir.
This item is an audit. As you mentioned, Azovar Government Solutions is an audit. State farm project. Sales tax, franchise taxes. Short term. Uh, the audit's going to identify any errors in reporting and make sure that any of the taxes are due to the town frankly. Sent here, so. Uh, the agreement does not have an initial upfront cost and does receive compensation. A percentage of anything that they recover. There is one edit to uh. I put it in everyone's chairs, but. There was an edit to the professional services agreement. It's found on page two of two. And essentially, the only change was that. In the case of litigation, the laws in Texas would apply and. Uh, any of that would take place within the courts in the state of Texas, if it originally said Illinois, so. Mr. Ted Camel is the senior vice president of Azovar and is available to answer any additional questions.
Mr. Bar, before we invite Mr. Camel. What's the process for determining the percentage? Of compensation for the, for the uh. Entity?
In terms of the breakdown or?
Is it a fixed percentage or is it a minimum certain amount or what, how does this work?
Um, sales and use tax, short term rental. Was twenty two percent. And any other fees that were discovered, twenty, thirty nine percent.
Okay, so that's not minimum. Twenty two and twenty percent of what, of what we are able to recover.
Correct. And. I believe it's uh, on exhibit A, the statement of work, section one A. Details the uh. It details the different uh, things that, that they're going to be covering in the honor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bar. Let me invite uh, uh, Mr. Camel. So do you have any comments or, or anything to add?
Uh, no, sir. Uh, uh, the, the, the franchise audits. Will start and end at different times because you have different entities that, that uh, that have business with the city. The sales tax reviews are, are ongoing and the city will receive a quarterly update. Uh, we'll be kicking the tires uh, as long as we're under contract with your town. Uh, so we're, we're not just looking for errors and helping you find money once. It's an, as long as we're under contract with you. We'll be looking for errors. We're, we're not going in and auditing any of your local businesses. Uh, what we're auditing are this, are the controller reports and we're looking for errors in reporting, misallocations. Uh, use tax errors, those types of things that can be corrected electronically with the controller. And obviously some jurisdiction is going to lose that tax revenue to your benefit. And uh, that's, that's how the, the business of what we do uh, is conducted in the state of Texas.
So I have a couple of questions. One, um. When do you assess the fee? Is it after town realize the benefit of the tax? Or, or, or what, what's your point of assessment of fees?
Yes, sir. You'll, you'll receive a, a document from us from the controller. Of the, the revenue that's been put into your account. We do not bill the contingency until we can document that. So it's actual recovered amounts to your, your city treasury. Your town's treasury.
Thank you. Second question is. Is the service for a certain period of time for one year, six months, or this is an ongoing service?
I, I believe your contract is for uh, the, is for one year if I'm not correct. And you have options to renew uh.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. But if you don't mind taking a seat, I'll call you, okay? So I'm going to close open for, I'm sorry, Mr. Camel, anything else, sir?
No, sir. Unless you, if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. I'm going to open up for public comments. So if anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward. And speak to the council on item number seven. You may please come forward. If you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward. Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any questions for Mr. Bar or Mr. Camel? Mr. Egan?
Um, Mr. Camel. I think as most people in here who are on this council know, I think kind of backwards. Is there an audit of your audit? To the extent that if they find that. In your audit, you saw that fifty thousand dollars was supposed to come to the town. And that money gets deposited into the town's account. And then you get your percentage, whatever it is, as a result of that. And then a subsequent audit finds that that was an error. Then do you refund the percentage that you got paid? As we have to pay that fifty thousand dollars back?
Well, in the fifteen years I've been doing this, I've, I've, I've never seen that happen. Once the controller, the controller is going to. Uh, he doesn't, they don't automatically. Make the corrections that we recommend without thoroughly investigating to make sure that, that. What we submit to them as a correction is validated. Uh, that takes time. Um, most of the time that takes months, uh, not days or weeks. And so when they actually decide that it was a misallocation or an error. Um, the, the books are effectively closed on that. Um, that they have, there have been instances. Uh, I've actually had cities hire uh, our services because they were. Under audit by the, a company was under audit by the controller. Where the audit was actually, the controller actually. Audited uh, usually very large firms and discovered that the city uh, uh, should not have gotten sales tax. And then they notified the city they were going to lose significant amounts of money. Sometimes in the. One city, it was, it was over a million dollars. And they hired us to, 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 to red flag. We, what we also will do for your town is that we will self uh. Audit and, and let, and alert you if we think that you should not be getting the sales tax dollars. You don't pay us a contingency fee for us letting the controller know that there's an error that should be going to another city. And you, you certainly don't want to turn down that money, but what you don't want to happen is. I let a year, two years, even five years go and then the controller goes, oh, guess what? You're going to have to pay back that money. Um, so some, some communities want us to make sure that we're, you're, you're getting every penny that you're due and not a penny more. Uh, and not a penny less. So uh, that is a good question, but I've never had uh, the controller come back on any correction they've made. they've made that we have turned in.
Well, and thank you for the second part of your answer because that was my second question. And that kind of makes this an opportunity that for the town, that this is, there's not a cost impact to us. It's kind of a win-win situation, although we're not necessarily on the same team, but we are. You guys win a little bit, we win a little bit more. But thank you.
Councilmember Egan, I would like to add one caveat because I have pursued a reallocation and it was over a million dollars and it took me several years with the comptroller's office. The caveat is this, once the comptroller finishes its process, which is elaborate and involves appeals, multiple appeal levels, they will reallocate the funds and deal with the other entity on a repayment schedule. After the comptroller's office has finished its review and reallocated, the taxpayer still has the opportunity to file suit in court. And in the event that they do that, then there could be a court decision that might affect the reallocation. But I would agree that the comptroller's office's process is so incredibly thorough that it would be a difficult case to win if you were the taxpayer involved.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to add to Burton's comments, two items. One is that the 4B did approve this as we sent it to them first because they obviously received sales tax. And then the, a second comment I just wanted to make is I had asked, it started a couple of staff members ago for us to be pursuing this. And through the process, I realized that one of the companies that we were getting quotes from was Mr. Camel worked for. And I've worked with Mr. Camel at two other cities with extensive types of projects such as this. So although he's with a different company now, I have personally worked with him pretty extensively in two different cities.
Thank you, Ms. Katley.
And just so you know, the city that I worked for, I did write a letter to the mayor of the other city advising them that we were seeking a reallocation and begging them not to spend the money. But that fell on deaf ears and it was a very small community.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Are there additional comments or questions? Okay. If there are none, I'm going to call for a motion on item number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven.
Motion made, Mr. Clark, seconded by Mr. Eldridge to approve item number seven as presented. Have you all heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight. Discuss, consider, and act upon the second reading of ordinance 20-18 and ordinance, amending ordinance 90-22, which made appropriation for the support of the town of Sannevale for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, and amending the annual budget of the town of Sannevale for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Ms. Hopkins, good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. This, as you said, is a second reading. This was a true up of our debt service account due to the issuance of certificates of obligation, our CIP that is funded by those certificates of obligation, the 4A EDC based on the voter approved initiative to dissolve the 4A and special revenue due to donations, grants, and the effects of court-related fees. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. I'm going to open up our public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council, you may please come forward. Or if you're calling via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward. Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No hands raised.
No hands raised. So I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any questions or discussions on item number eight? If there are none, I'm going to call for a motion on item number eight. Motion made by Mr. Eldridge to approve item number eight, seconded by Mr. Egan. Have you all heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If none, all in favor signify. Mr. Kevin Clark? All right. All opposed, motion passed seven. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight. Discuss, consider, and act upon appointing community members to the excellence in local government committee. Ms. Katley?
I would respectfully ask that the mayor and council table this item until the August 24th meeting. We have a couple of members that we still need to get a hold of before making the final appointments.
Council, if there are objections, I'm going to call for a motion to table item number nine to October 24th meeting. Motion made by Mr. Allen to table item number nine to 24th, August 24th. Second, second by Mr. Feach. Have you all heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed? Mr. Clark? Okay. I'm going to count six of Mr. Clark's, is under quarter? Is that the right way to say? Okay. Moving on to item number 10, we already covered, that item is already tabled, item number 11. I'm going to invite the chief to see status update regarding the timeline and implementation of the police department.
Mayor and council, we are in the process of filling our remaining positions and continuing training of the current officers.
Are we still good for October 1st?
Yes, sir.
We keep asking the same thing, right? Thanks for confirming it every time. Council, any questions for chief? Okay, if there are none, I'm going to move forward. We already covered item number 12. Item number, so can I have a motion to recess in the executive session pursuant to chapter 551, chapter D of the Texas government code, section 551 dot or 87, economic development? There are two items, project DC and project WB. Motion made by Mr. Feach, seconded by Mr. Egan to adjutant to executive session. Or recess into executive session. Have you all heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven. That time is 7:49 and we are in executive session.
Okay, now time is 8:20 I am going to reconvene into the regular session for August 10. Can confirm that as a result of the executive session no action needs to be taken. Council can I have a motion to adjourn from the regular meeting? Motion made by Alid, second by Alan to adjourn from the regular session. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion 5-0. I couldn't confirm whether Mr. Freeman or Clark are present so with that, time is 8:21 and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you Brenda, Susan, Barton, Rachel.